Let me start with the roll call, please.
Atkins, Evans, Mitchell, Mizell.
Here.
Mutsler.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Here. So we have Quorum. We'll start off with the invocation given by Reverend Don Anderson, Emergency Services Chaplain, fellow of our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Good morning, fathers. We come to you today. We are so thankful for a beautiful day that you've given to our community and Lord for many blessings. Lord, today we also ask that you just be with our council members and our leaders tonight. Lord, as they take care of the city business, give them wisdom, courage, discernment. Lord, I pray also that you just watch over and protect our city staff as well as our police, firefighters, and EMS, Lord, protect them, keep them safe. Lord, we just thank you again for the bountiful blessings you've given us in growth and so many opportunities in our community. We just pray that your blessings will continue to stay here. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don. Nobody signed in on public comments. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Jordan moved, Garner seconded. Roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. And on to second readings for tonight in Council Bill 6858.
Evening, council. Thanks for your time tonight. This ordinance is just the second reading of the budget as presented in May. So nothing new for me to present this evening. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have in the meantime.
Any questions regarding budget or capital improvement plan? All right, second reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, adopting the fiscal year 2026 budget for the period beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, and the capital improvement plan 2026 through 2030.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Garner on the second. Roll call, please.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill 6858 becomes ordinance 7100. Thanks, Sean. Appreciate it. Thank you very much for all the hard work, and thank you, staff, for putting that together. Troy, great job. Sean, thank you. And please pass that on to your team as well. So that's a great budget. So Council Bill 6859. Richard?
This is just a second reading on a code change to getting compliance with the DNR regulations for stormwater treatment and handling on developments. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
I hate to ask a question, but I got a question. If you go past the new fire station, keep going out there. I don't, I'm not sure if the city will understand this.
Yes.
Go about there, turn right, and there was a new street.
Yep.
That had eroded dirt and rock all over it.
Yeah, we had, so I was met with that developer last week, and he's planning on going ahead and developing the remainder of that. There's a piece that was undeveloped. There is a sediment pond down there in the bottom of that, kind of in the drawl, that's capturing that. But yes.
It was all over the road.
Yeah, it's all over the place, yeah.
Yeah. So as of now, we don't have anything to...
We kind of cleaned that, but yeah, there needs to be a better, this gives us a better mechanism to be able to, yeah, enforce that much better.
Any other questions, comments, council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, amending the city code of ordinances by repealing Chapter 16, Environment, Article 3, Erosion and Sediment Control in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof a newly created Article 3, Erosion and Sediment Control, Article 4, Illicit Discharges, and Article 5, Maintenance of Permanent Stormwater Controls.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Mizell on the second. Roll call, please.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Council Bill 6859 becomes ordinance 7101. Thanks, Richard. Appreciate it. Council Bill 6860. Rebecca?
Good evening, mayor and council. I am back for my annual grant fund approval. So I have three this year. The first one is for our matching marketing grant from Missouri Division of Tourism. It's our largest grant for $65,000. It is a 50-50 match, and that is where we do the majority of our advertising, which will include this year, digital, which is heavy. It's because that's where everybody is to find us. We're going to do print, and then we're going to add a little bit of television, which will appear on streaming services. And I'll talk about how we're going to get to there with the next grant application. But that's just a brief overview. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You mean, we're going to do all three of them? Or do you want to do all three of them, or is...
Yeah, I do all three of them, but they're three different ordinances, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
I apologize.
That's fine. Or we can vote and go on, whatever you want to do.
Next year.
All right. Any questions on that Council Bill 6860? All right, so now 6861. You going to talk about that, or do you want to...
Do you want to go ahead with the 6861?
Well, I'm just trying to make it easier for you, if you want to. All at one time, and then I...
I'll talk about all of them.
And then Lacy can read all of them.
Oh, perfect. She can do the heavy lifting. I like this a whole lot better. This is super fun. Okay, thanks. The next grant is what's called a marketing platform development grant that is also through the Missouri Division of Tourism. That is a grant. It'll be a $5,000 grant. It's a 50-50 match. So what we're going to do with that is update our photos and video. We did that a few years ago, but it's super important to keep your assets fresh, is what we call that. And then the other thing that we're going to do with this is we're going to put a little bit of an emphasis on the Route 66 Centennial in our advertising and marketing materials that we'll start using later this year. And that will include the making of the video that we'll use on the TV streaming services from the previous grant. Can I take any questions on that, too?
Kind of on that. But when will we hear a little bit more about what is the plan for the centennial for our area?
Well, there's quite a bit going on right now. I would say that for our area, our major project will be the traditional annual Route 66 festival that we do the first weekend in June. And that entity, the Route 66 Society, has applied for another grant from the Missouri Route 66 Centennial Commission. So they had a grant for this year's festival as well, and it was about $50,000. And I think they'll be asking for another $50,000 to beef up their festival in order to honor and commemorate the centennial. And then I have my third grant to talk about that relates to that as well.
Okay. Any more, any questions on 6861, council?
Just kind of comment to Gibbs' question. It's not just Lebanon. It's the whole route through here, and everybody is having something big and special to play off of everybody else's. Bring people in with that. So it's a, I mean, this is our part of it.
Yeah.
But Waynefield's doing it, Marshfield's doing it, everybody. So...
There's a lot of activity with a lot of the destinations along Route 66. Of course, we're just focusing on Missouri, but it's nice because it is nationwide as well. But a lot of the destinations are taking advantage of the, we call them sponsorships from the Centennial Commission, but they're really grants. And a lot of folks are applying for those. I sit on two or three of those committees.
Rebecca, you're on that centennial board?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else from Lebanon?
Not on that board. However, Rod Reed with Shepherd Hills, he is actually the chairman of the federal Route 66 Centennial Commission. So he's kind of top-down, and we have our area covered well. Yeah, it's great. Very unusual.
All right, Council Bill 6862.
Okay, the last grant that I want to talk about is the Missouri Route 66 Centennial Commission sponsorship to get an interactive shield sign. And this is something that we are planning on putting in Boswell Park. And it looks, and I've got a really fancy graphic here for you. Now, I realize this says Cuba, Missouri. But ours will obviously read Lebanon, and it's not designed quite yet, but it'll be something similar. This is about 12-foot tall, 11-foot wide. We will put that out in Boswell Park, and it just is another reason and entices people to stop in our area, take their photo. So at first, I thought this was kind of hokey. But I will say that I was happy to hear from Pacific, Missouri, the tourism director there. They put their sign up already. I was waiting till after our fiscal year starts. But she has informed me that they don't even have the landscaping or anything done around their sign in Pacific, and people are stopping daily to take photos with that sign. So it's a $25,000 grant. That is not matching. That is $25,000 reimbursable. So I felt like we would be remiss if we did not apply for that grant and get that sign. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions on that, council?
Those are the kind of grants I like.
I do like the 100% grants the best. However, we do have to pay for things first and get reimbursed, but that's no problem. I'm a master at that at this point. So...
All right, first reading then of 6860.
An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the acceptance of the fiscal year 2026 marketing matching grant with the State of Missouri Division of Tourism to provide funding for the promotion of tourism-related amenities and events in the community and authorizing the project director to enter into and execute any subsequent documents for the purpose of utilizing said funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Atkins and Mutsler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the acceptance of the fiscal year 2026 marketing matching grant with the State of Missouri Division of Tourism to provide funding for the promotion of tourism-related amenities and events in the community and authorizing the project director to enter into and execute any subsequent documents for the purpose of utilizing said funding.
Move on to second.
Sorry.
Let's give that to Jordan and Mutsler seconded.
He just left me plum out.
Uh-huh. He was a little bit louder. Roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill 6860 becomes ordinance 7102. And the first reading of 6861?
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and project director to enter into and execute any and all documents necessary for the award acceptance with the State of Missouri Division of Tourism for the fiscal year 2026 marketing platform development grant and authorizing the project director to enter into and execute any documents necessary to utilize said funding.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mizell and Mutsler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and project director to enter into and execute any and all documents necessary for the award acceptance with the State of Missouri Division of Tourism for the fiscal year 2026 marketing platform development grant and authorizing the project director to enter into and execute any documents necessary to utilize said funding.
Second, second.
Mutsler and Atkins on the second. Roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill 6861 becomes ordinance 7103. And Council Bill 6862, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement to accept the grant from Missouri Route 66 Centennial Commission for the Missouri Route 66 interactive shield sign for Boswell Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Mizell, roll call, please.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement to accept the grant from Missouri Route 66 Centennial Commission for the Missouri Route 66 interactive shield sign for Boswell Park.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Jordan and Atkins on the second. Roll call, please.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill 6862 becomes ordinance 7104. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you so much. I'll see you next year.
Thanks for going through the gauntlet, the triple gauntlet right there. So great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Council Bill 6863, Mike?
Mayor and council, presenting three asphalt overlays proposed for fiscal year 26. The first is on Washington Street, and it will be where we stopped last year, between Third and Fourth, on down to Seventh Street. That's a considerable project. Five inches asphalt include reworking the subgrids. The second is Rolling Hills Road from Jefferson Street to the city limits. And the third would be an overlay of Harwood Avenue from Washington to St. Louis. A few years ago, we overlaid from Lynn Street down to St. Louis. That would complete the rest of Harwood Avenue. That's a total of a little over a mile and a half, about $452,000. Happy to answer any questions.
Is it all five-inch thick, or just Washington?
Just Washington.
Yeah.
What was on, Rolling Hills Road? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
What was that again?
Rolling Hills Road. It's a two-inch asphalt overlay from Jefferson to the city limit line.
Okay.
Will that be repainted, too, just like it is now, on the sides?
On the sides, it is. Along the ditches, we'll put white lines along the side.
Okay.
There won't be any expansion on the width, I'm assuming.
That would, expansion on the width there with the limitations on the right-of-way would probably fall into a curb-and-gutter project, and it'd be a much more significant and costly project there.
I've had significant people ask about that, that live along that area, and...
It's a 20-foot-wide road right now. And the other concern with widening a road like that at the edge of the city limits is when you widen the road, speed goes up. Okay? So it's just a little bit under a mile long, and it certainly could be done. But there's a 40-foot right-of-way along Rolling Hills Road, and we'd have to acquire some more right-of-way, probably have to relocate some utilities. And then it'd be a reconstruction project versus an asphalt overlay. So significant more work and cost.
Like some we've done.
That'd probably be about a, that'd probably be at least a two-year, maybe a three-year project to rebuild that.
I'm assuming the speed will probably go up when you overlay it.
It usually does. Now, we will, planning on coming back to council, just on the north side of Herndon Road, there are some stormwater issues there on Rolling Hills Road. We'll be coming back in July with a, to ask for a task order to be approved for some engineering to look at those stormwater improvements. So at the first phase of this, we're planning on going to Herndon Road. And then after the stormwater improvements are made, hopefully this fall, then we would finish it after the city limit line.
So Mike, if I recall, back when we talked about the Daytona issue, we were talking about repaving that whole area, that whole street going down there. Is that still the plan for, or how far does that go from the city, the city limits to whatever you said?
Rolling Hills?
Yeah.
We're paving all of the Rolling Hills Road inside the city limits.
So it goes all the way to Oakdale, just so you know, from Oakdale all the way back to Jefferson or 64, whatever you want to call it. Just past... If you know where Sam Schneider lives.
Just past Dogwood Hill, where the city limit line is.
Be good. Any other questions, council?
You seem reluctant to widen the road. It's just something that many, many people have indicated that's, it's a safety hazard. In your opinion, is it not necessary, or is it something that we should just not engage in?
In my opinion, I don't think it's, I don't think it's worth doing at this point with the traffic that's on there.
You're probably talking triple cost or quadruple, or two or three, four million dollars, five, five million or something to rebuild it. So the entire street budget for, what, two and a half years, three years? So it would, it would, yeah.
Do you know, have we done a traffic count on that road for a while?
Yeah, yeah, we have.
You have?
Yeah.
So is it significant or not?
I think, as I'm recalling, it was around 3,000 cars a day. We've got a lot, a lot of roads inside the city limits that have higher traffic counts than that.
Namely, Washington.
Washington, Morgan Road.
3,000 seems like an awful lot. It may be compared to...
It does look like there's a lot of opportunity for development and maybe to claim more property for the city on Rolling Hills. I don't know. It just might be worth endeavor. Just have to think about it. Probably not a discussion for today, though, right?
It's just gonna, if we take this on, it would push out other, to pay for, push out other overlays that are needed on, on roads farther out to accomplish this one project. Just all, at the end of the day, it's about time and money.
Yeah. I think that we're in a mode, though, to think about maybe debt financing something, a big project like this at some point. I mean, as you look at this and say, I mean, I've ridden the road many times. It, I think it's just per se dangerous. I think it's a dangerous road. I knew, you may disagree, maybe because you're just used to driving on it. But I've driven out to the chief's house many times, and at night, it is absolutely a dangerous road. I would love to see it improved, but that would, taking out some of the rolling hills as well, so we may have to retitle the road.
The geometries are more dangerous than the road.
Right. So it's, it just seems like a, so I look at the map, and I just think, you know, we're gonna, not to make this a bigger issue, but we're gonna spend a ton of money redoing this road, or, you know, paving the road. I look at all the different areas. Maybe we could just cut in a new road or do something different, and just have another way to get out to this area. But maybe that's not, maybe that's not good either. Are there other alternatives that we could explore?
To relocate the road?
Or just do, or use another roadway to improve, or take some of the traffic off of it? Because I know that it's a hard sell.
It's an arterial road at the city limit. The city limit line is on the west side of the road. So I would say that you're gonna have a significant amount of traffic coming and going in and out of the county there, regardless if you developed another route. That's probably one of the explanations there for the, for the traffic count there is that cars coming in from the county.
Just look kind of parallel to it. There's, you know, if we added some more property to the city, maybe there's another way to attach Daytona as well. I don't know. I just look at the road and think, if it can't be improved, or it's not going to be improved, which I get. I mean, but then we need to take some traffic, traffic off of it, or make it safer some way, you know, some other way to try and handle the problem. Or go the other direction and, and have people come in another, another route. I don't know.
All the roads to the east of Rolling Hills Road have been overlaid in the last few years. Herndon Road and all of residential area, and we've been working toward getting Northview overlaid. So there's another route coming into the county. They could go through there and come up Harris Lane into town. There's limited access all the way through to, from that area to Highway 5. If I would suggest anything, there are two things on Rolling Hills Road that I would like to see done. One is the hill just south of Herndon to be cut down. That's a big undertaking. And relocate, relocating the intersection of Highway 64. And that would require property acquisition. And drive it every day. Live out there. Drive it every day. And the, that intersection there would be something that would be worth looking into at Jefferson. That'd be a big project, a big undertaking.
With MoDOT, I'm sure, too, at the table at that as well, so...
Significant property acquisition there to be able to make something work. It'd be worth doing, but it'd be a big project.
Mike, could we, if it's all right with you, and you think it's good, I'd like to get an updated traffic count. Is that possible?
Yeah.
That'd be great, just so we know what we're talking about.
All right, back to the ordinance, though. That's on here. Sorry.
What are we talking about, an ordinance?
All right, first reading then of 6863.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the recommendation from city staff and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents for three street overlay projects as reflected in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mizell and Mutsler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the recommendation from city staff and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents for three street overlay projects as reflected in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Wall and Atkins on the second. Roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill 6863 becomes ordinance 7105. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council Bill 6864, Troy?
Mr. Mayor, this is a request from Parks Board, and something I wholeheartedly support, which would allow, authorize an agreement with the Lebanon Area Foundation to create a pass-through fund for gifts and contributions to the Lebanon Parks Department. Creates a separate entity. We think it's more likely they may provide a grant to, funding to the Lebanon Parks Foundation if it's run through the Lebanon Area Foundation as opposed to writing a check for the city. So this was an agreement. What it'll require, the administrative fees will be carried by the Parks Department. They're relatively minimal, but would allow us to, an easy way to accept gifts, an easier way to accept gifts going forward. So I would encourage you to have consideration of this.
I think that fee is usually about 2%.
Yep. Yeah, which we would, if we got a gift, we would absorb, yes.
Do we know of any gifts we're expecting?
The last gift we got was for a park bench, about 750 bucks, but we're always hopeful. We always have our hand out.
Any other questions, council? All right, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Lebanon Area Foundation to create a pass-through fund for contributions to the Lebanon Parks Department.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Atkins, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Lebanon Area Foundation to create a pass-through fund for contributions to the Lebanon Parks Department.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Atkins and Mizell on second. Roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutsler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill 6864 becomes ordinance 7106. Thanks, Troy. Council, oh, you have the, you have the next one here, too. Council Bill 6865.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a request to declare city-owned property located at 517 Murphy Road, about 1.6 acres, to be declared surplus and authorizing my team to issue a request for proposals for its either sale or transfer. In conversations with the Parks Department and the Parks Board, they have asked, and I would agree with, that any agreement would include a clawback provision, that if that, a development did not occur within a reasonable amount of time, say five years, if a property was sold, we would refund the money, or transferred, we would, there would be a clawback provision to bring it back into the, to the city for potential use. So with your support, we would then start the request for proposal process and see what this generates.
Any questions, council? All right, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri declaring city-owned property located at five seventeen Murphy Road as surplus and authorizing the city administrator to issue a request for proposals for its disposition.
Motion to approve. Second.
Warner and Jordan, roll call please.
Mizell?
Yes.
Mutchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri declaring city-owned property located at five seventeen Murphy Road as surplus and authorizing the city administrator to issue a request for proposals for its disposition.
Move on a second.
I had you at the first though. Okay, Mizell and Mutchler on the second, roll call please.
Mutchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
All right, Council Bill sixty-eight, sixty-five becomes ordinance seventy-one oh seven. Thanks Troy. Council Bill sixty-eight, sixty-six, Jessica.
Good evening, mayor and council. An RFP was issued for electric consultant services for the city. Three proposals were received and scored by city staff. Staff recommends entering into a one-year agreement with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms with TOTH and Associates. We have used them in the past, well, five to seven years since I've been here and they've done good work and they had a good fee schedule.
Any questions regarding that, council? First reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with TOTH and Associates to provide electric consulting services.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call please.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Mizell? Mutchler?
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with TOTH and Associates to provide electric consulting services.
Move on a second. Second, second.
Mizell and Atkins on the second, roll call please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Mutchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Now, Council Bill sixty-eight, sixty-six becomes ordinance seventy-one oh eight. And Council Bill sixty-eight, sixty-seven.
Mayor and council, a bid was issued for building demolition and site cleanup services on an as-needed basis. Work will be performed based off an hourly labor rate and equipment rate bidders were required to provide. Work will be completed based off the completed work order cost estimate form completed per project by the awarded bidder or bidders and city of Lebanon staff. It's similar to a task order that we assign now. Three bids were received and reviewed. Staff recommends entering into one-year agreements with all three bidders. Bo Ellenstein, Hicks Co. LLC and Tubbs and Sun Construction. These will also be for emergency demolition projects if they come up also.
Any questions on that, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement between the city and multiple contractors to provide building demolition and site cleanup of designated properties along with emergency demolition services.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Mizell, roll call please.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Mutchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement between the city and multiple contractors to provide building demolition and site cleanup of designated properties along with emergency demolition services.
Move on a second. Second, second.
Atkins and Mizell on the second, roll call please.
Atkins?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Mutchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-eight, sixty-seven becomes ordinance seven thousand one hundred nine.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, Jessica, appreciate it. That's all for ordinances tonight. Any comments from staff and audience? Chief, have any comments? Richard? I see everything. Counselor?
No, mayor.
Troy?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to quickly recognize the work of your board chair of the Parks Board, Carrie Plasmeyer, for bringing kind of the solution and brokering the proposal that saw for the, the pass-through fund for the Lebanon Area Foundation. She had kind of taken that project on and championed it so well. I was very appreciative of her, her help to get that done. I also did want to recognize the continued good work of our utility billing and, and collection staff. Last week was a bit of a challenge with the ongoing billing change and then we suffered, and then we had an internet fiber cut, which just makes that much more fun to be around when, when the systems go down. Email, but the, the staff have done a tremendous amount of work, remarkable patience. I want to single out Brett. She's a relatively new staff member. It's a good thing I don't answer the phones, because I would have probably been fired in five minutes. And she was on that, working with that person for probably better part of forty-five minutes and worked through them and got the issues done. And that kind of patience and understanding and excellent customer service needs to be recognized. So she's an outstanding addition to our team, I just wanted to point it out.
Who is that?
What's her last name?
Brett Richardson.
Brett, Brett Richardson, right? Thank you, Brett Richardson, I just, yes. She's got the patience of Job. Lastly, I, I thought I'd give you a, a good update on our SIM lab. We are down to kind of the final construction points. Mayor was out there a couple of weeks ago, I think, and got a tour. They've made real progress. We have now been in the process of trying to finalize, finalize the partnership with our four healthcare providers. I'm pleased to say all four are gonna be participating. Lake Regional has jumped on and they will be sponsoring what is an intensive care unit SIM lab. Jordan Valley will be doing basic life support, kind of a SIM lab, which will be very useful to our first responders, not only as well as an educational tool for students. And Mercy has, was gonna pick theirs. I hadn't heard what they'd gone, but they are in the process of donating for all the facilities and we're waiting back to hear from Cox as well. But we've had good productive meetings with them and we are on schedule to get that facility ready for when school opens in, in August. So great work by staff and if you're curious about what it looks like, let me know and I will make sure that we, Sean Williams is out there almost every day. We'll get you out there and if you want a little walking tour, it's, but it's an impressive facility. I think it's gonna be a really nice addition to all the amenities offered in Lebanon. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our partners who jumped on. I was, nothing was in writing, so it was like, I don't remember that conversation and, but they all were like, tell us what you need and when you need it. So I couldn't be more thrilled for their participation. And that's all I've got.
OTC's gonna run it.
And OTC's gonna run it and the school district's gonna kind of operate and maintain it and so it'll be a nice, nice, real community partnership going forward. And I think it'll, it'll, it'll really set the tone regionally.
And you'll make sure all of us get invitations to the ribbon cutting?
Yep, and I, the former city administrator was in town and he would like, he wants to make sure he's not forgotten in the mix too. So we'll drag him back from St. Joseph as well, so.
Buy lunch.
I hope he hears that. Awesome, thank you Troy, appreciate it.
Anytime.
Atkins, anything?
I just wanted to ask a question if it's appropriate, but what's the status of the Lee Building?
At this point, it is part of the project with buying companies. It is the second phase of the project. Once they complete their apartment complex out off of Fremont, they are going to move to the HD Lee Building, develop that into first floor retail and up to two floors of residential on that building. They have, they have a five-year clock to, to get that done. We're looking in the, in that little handout, there's a little bit of money in there for us to maybe do some programming of that space so it just doesn't become a dirt lot for the next five years. If you've ever been to the, and you need a reasoned road trip to Kansas City, there's an iron district in North Kansas City, which is basically just shipping containers set up on a vacant lot and they run coffee shops, sandwich shops, a little startup businesses. To me, it'd be kind of an interesting way to do something unique with basically temporary facilities and then once the, the buying companies is ready to move on that project, they could be relocated or disassembled, but be a way, not have to just deal with a, a dirt lot for the next five years with all the activity going on in that downtown. So Sarah Angs is kind of, she was back in Kansas City this weekend, so, and there's a little bit of resources put in there as part of that downtown group to maybe have Richard dump a lot of gravel on that site and start to make it as a programming space, if nothing more than food trucks, at, at least initially, just to program it and provide a little activity during the evenings and weekends.
Okay, thank you. Mizell, anything?
Just briefly, I think we had kind of a conversation about the roads and I'm glad we cleared the air about it and talked about it. I think it's one of those things that my, I obviously voted for and want to go forward with projects on all the roadways and take the input of, of the people that are doing the work and, and I really respect it. I just think going forward, if we're going to be improving a roadway, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be, you know, doing an overlay on it. So it seems like as a group, we need to get together on what projects we're going to do and start really working towards that, because we don't want to waste Mike's time or anyone else's time in coming up with plans to improve roadways that we need to actually expand or do something different. So I know, and maybe the answer is just we're not going to do it and that's okay. I mean, it's just one of the, the things that I think, as the citizens look at us and say, you guys don't do enough or that you don't care about the projects that we care about, because Rolling Hills Road, it comes up a lot and we've just decided now to overlay it and put a Band-Aid on the problem, which is I understand why we're doing it, but we'll all have to answer for that at some point. Every, every single one of us will have to answer for it and say, why wasn't something done? You guys just put overlay on it. And I can give the answer, I have the ammunition, exactly what we need. But I think we just need to get a good plan for what the next phase is and if we're gonna dump, borrow some money for it. Anyway, that was just always wanting to move forward, just always wanting to push the ball forward, because if we don't, it seems like nothing ever gets done. So just wanted to bring that back up to the fore, because we had a conversation about it. But nothing, nothing more than that.
Mayor, he makes good, made a good point about, we don't have to dump all the money. If we had to borrow some money to finish these, not just that, just any major project, we're certainly in a position to do that and maybe need to look at some of the bigger things coming down the pipe.
Well, that's why I was trying my best to explore with Mike, you know, the development possibilities of Rolling Hills Road. And as I looked at it on the map, I see lots of vacant land around there for subdivisions, other businesses, things that we could develop as another arterial to get in and out of town, you know, not use Highway five or just go different routes. I, I know that it's tough and I'm not saying that these things are easy, but that's why I bring them up, because they're hard.
That's the law you're in here, right?
I bring them up because they're hard, so. Anyway, that's all.
Good point, good point. Mutchler?
Nothing.
Wall?
Nothing, mayor.
Jordan?
I got one question, did we reformat our electric bill? Because mine is really different. I got it today.
The format has changed some, they're working, they're working on the line items.
I gotta come see them because I can't get the numbers, my numbers don't match theirs, so I'll see, come see them tomorrow.
If you're decimal, if you've got more numbers to the left of your decimal, it's right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what, they just did that just for you.
I was gonna say, because I, I keep another chart with it and the new ones don't fit in the old, old chart now. So anyway, I just, I gotta come up tomorrow anyway, so, yeah.
Okay. That was all the new system.
But it, it puts the tax on each item. And it says service, it doesn't say anything about sewer.
Yeah, Wendy's worked through that. This sewer wasn't a full-out, I think, on the line item. She's, she's working with this offer, helping to get that.
It's just different from what I saw, what I'm used to seeing. And they didn't, didn't have my backyard light bill on there either. Ten bucks. Well, the total, the total was still, the total was still without even, it was nineteen dollars over all the numbers.
Cash right now.
I was gonna say, I gotta bring it up tomorrow.
He's quick on that, wasn't he?
I don't have anything.
Garner?
Yep.
Nothing? All right, a couple of housekeeping, July fourteenth to July twenty-eighth will be our next two meetings. And then I just wanted to give some recognition, a couple of weeks ago gave, accepted the gold star marker over there at the Veterans Memorial Park. So if you guys haven't been by that, it's a great little addition to there. And I got to thank you from the Sunbonnet Garden Club for accepting that. So I just wanted to pass that on to the, to the city as well, that, but what a great way to, to honor the gold star markers. I believe they said, if I remember right, they were going, it was two or three weeks ago, I think we're the fourteenth gold marker in the state. So that's something to be honored and, and inside the Lebanon community. Also have an invitation that I received this afternoon that I want to make to council and this is for Sparklight is announced that they, that Elevate Lebanon has won one of their spring edition charitable giving awards and they received thousands of applications across twenty-four states they operate in and pleased to have an award winner in Lebanon. And they're making a presentation on Thursday, June twenty-sixth, that's this Thursday, at eleven fifteen. And that's at three twenty-four North Jefferson Avenue is, is where that presentation's made. And they extended an invitation to, to all of us to be able to go to that as well. They are also having the ribbon cutting at nine thirty in the morning at their new office located at eleven twenty Lynn Street, if you guys can make it there too. So if anybody's interested in that, I have information for that. So I don't have anything else, but thank you all again. And Sean ducked out of here, but thanks to his staff again for the budget and Troy, certainly appreciate you diving in, tremendous work and certainly appreciate that and think there's a lot of great stuff in there coming up for the next year, so. With that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all.